Yeah, that'd be nice. See, that's why I brought my-
Thank you.
Oh, and I have something else for you, Lou.
Okay.
Here's my TMA application-
Oh, good.
And my check for John.
Okay.
You'll make it to the city council.
Yeah.
I registered John.
Okay, good. So your husband's going to go, that's great. Okay. Sure.
Well, now you're interesting, so-
Hey, do ya?
I went ahead and got that off my desk.
That service delivery strategy one would be good with everything that we've got going on.
I know, and I don't know if I even marked that up.
Do you know what, it'll fill up. Because it's new.
It is there, maybe I might make that because it's on my number one rather than what I have for my number one. I didn't even think about that, Lou. Here they are, let's see. He's his own, because I figure, we have a council meeting on Thursday night, so we probably won't get there Fri- until Friday late. So Saturday, is it on Saturday?
It's the service delivery. Because it was a new one.
Mm-hmm. Is it on, is it on Friday?
There it is.
Yeah, okay, well, mark this one, my number one. That one.
Okay.
Okay?
I di- I didn't mean that.
No, no, I ju- I didn't, you know, I-
That'll be a good class.
It will, it will.
It's on a service delivery strategy.
And that, and that one, see, I didn't even think about what it would be, because I was looking at what I didn't already have.
Let's see what it says, make sure that it's what we think it is, because sometimes, you know how that goes?
Yeah, I do, I've been in a couple.
Here we go. Let's see, Official Trans- George Service Delivery Act, so it is the law that requires each county municipal to develop, periodically update a service delivery-
Yeah, yeah, that's one, that's one, and I need it, because I always wonder, why do we have to do this just for the government?
And it reviews the components of the ingredients.
Well, good, well, I'm glad you told me, so I can move that one over.
Did you say somebody will be here for that or not? Huh? So I need to read it.
You're gonna have to just read it for us?
I got it.
Yes, thank you. Well, I've got to go back there and get that sheet.
I misplaced it, but I found it now, that's the only one I have.
Okay, all right. I gotta go get the signing sheet. I forget that thing every time.
Well, there were, there was something back there to sign in, Lou. Back there in the name.
Yeah, I have to get it for the maid.
Oh, oh, you have to get it, really, ah, ah. So I hope you have to, I've already done that. Well, if I don't do it when it comes across my desk, it won't get done.
Wait, my memory's got, I'm a-
Yeah, that's, and that's a nice little book, it's got five hundred pages long.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order, please, it's one minute after six o'clock. This is February the fifteenth, twenty eighteen, council meeting. If you would, please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Goodman. I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight. We have a couple items that need to take care of here as proclamations. We have been, had a program called the Mayor's Pledge regarding the monarch butterflies, whose numbers have, have decreased substantially, tremendously over the last few years. And I would like to read this proclamation tonight as part of our requirements for our program to be a part of that. And it's very important that we have these pollinators and, and try not to destroy them, because the numbers have, have gone down unbelievably. But this, this is Milkweeds for Monarchs, the Canton Butterfly Project. Whereas the monarch butterfly is an iconic North American species, whose multi-generational migration and metamorphosis from caterpillar to butterfly has captured the imagination of millions of Americans. And whereas over twenty years ago, more than one billion eastern monarch butterflies migrated to Mexico, but in the winter of twenty fourteen, only sixty million made the trip. Sixty million seems like a lot, but it's nowhere near a billion. Whereas cities, towns, and counties have a critical role to play to help save the monarch butterfly, and the city of Canton will be playing a leadership role by launching Milkweeds for Monarchs, the Canton Butterfly Project. And whereas every citizen of Canton can make a difference for the monarch by planting native milkweed and nectar plants to provide habitat for the monarch and pollinators in locations where people live, work, learn, play, and worship. And whereas, on behalf of the people of Canton who will be joining me in creating a healthy habitat for these magnificent butterflies, I am honored to have taken the National Wildlife Federation's Mayor's Monarch Pledge. And I encourage other city officials across our great nation to take a stand with me, so that the monarch butterfly will once again flourish across the continent. Now therefore, I, Gene Hyde, would mayor the city of Canton to hereby proclaim and encourage all citizens in the city of Canton to participate in Milkweeds for Monarchs, the Canton Butterfly Project, by adding milkweed and nectar-producing plants in home and in community gardens, in an effort to create a habitat for the monarch butterfly. We also have a, another proclamation, it's recognizing branches of faith, and Mr. Brandon Roberts is here, and, and both of you want, want, let me go ahead and, I will read it and then we'll present it, if that's okay. Sorry about that. Whereas the city of Canton is a great place to live, work, to live, work, and play, and to raise a family. And whereas there are many wonderful charitable organizations in the city of Canton that exist to fulfill many important needs. And whereas the citizens of the city of Canton have a desire to be actively involved in the community. And whereas Branches of Faith is a new five oh three, five oh one C-three nonprofit organization that is formed to restore hope and unity and to bring the community together. And whereas the primary purpose of Branches of Faith is to have community faith-based and family-oriented outreach events that focus on hope, love, support, and leadership. And whereas the goal of these outreach events is to connect with the residents and to let them know that we genuinely care about them and want them to be active parts of the community. And whereas Branches of Faith also wants to assist other charitable organizations, wants to assist other charitable organizations fulfill their needs and fill in the gap. And whereas the purpose of Branches of Faith is to make a lasting positive impact in the community. Now therefore, be it resolved, the mayor and council of the city of Canton hereby declare Saturday, March seventeenth, twenty eighteen, as Branches of Faith Day, Inc., in the city of Canton, on the occasion of their launch party.
Good evening, I am Brandon Roberts, and I'm happy to be here tonight to introduce Branches of Faith to you. This is Heather Hardage, she's the executive vice president of our organization, so happy that she's here with me this evening. But as the mayor said, Branches of Faith is a new five oh one C-three nonprofit organization, and the primary purpose is to have community faith-based outreach events. We're trying to bring the community together and unify them, and reach, reach out to people in different areas in the community that have been, were through a tragedy or went through a difficult situation. So we want to reach out to them and have these family fun days, and just let them know that we care about them. And we also want to support other organizations, help fulfill their needs, and fill in the gap whenever possible. So I do want to take this opportunity to invite you to attend the launch party, which is going to be Saturday, March seventeenth, Blank Stage Acting Studios in Woodstock. I will make sure that you all get a formal invitation to that event, so you can make sure to attend, we would definitely appreciate that. And also want to thank council member, Mr. Estes, for his support, he, I really do appreciate that. But thank you so much for your time, and we do appreciate your support of Branches of Faith. Do you want to say thank you? Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, good luck. Next item, consideration to approve the agenda. The only adjustment I would like, like to make on that is, we do have an executive session to discuss potential litigation, and we need to add also, and, and real estate acquisition to that. That's the only change that I have, is there any other changes or corrections? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. You, just to remind council, you also had a request from the developer to pull, or to pull without prejudice, if council so wished, items E and F under Old Business related to the development on Sam Nelson Road.
Okay, I guess we will do that at the time we get to that, probably, or-
Okay.
It shouldn't take long to get to that, since we will have to vote to do, to actually accept the request. Okay. Any other changes?
I made a motion.
We have a motion?
I ma- I made a motion.
We have a motion to approve the agenda, second? Okay, Mr. Estes made the se- seconded that motion, Mr. Goodman made the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, say the five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for that. Okay, now we have the public service announcements, which I generally overlook, but we're going to get them right now, sorry.
That's okay, thank you, and thank you, Ms. Gold, for preparing these for me, and I noticed Ms. Gold also puts, prints it out in an extra-large font for me. Really appreciate that, thank you. Arbor Day, February sixteenth, in Cannon Park, from nine AM to five PM. Tree seedlings will be given away, and a variety of shrubs, plants, and fruit trees will be available for purchase. This is sponsored by the Canton Tree Commission. The next meeting of A Novel Idea will take place at East Main Cafe on Wednesday, February twenty-one, at seven PM. The authors will read excerpts from love and romance. Those who write and those who love to read are invited to attend. And what a novel idea is, authors come, they read from their works, and between readings, there'll be door prizes drawn. And it's an opportunity to meet and talk with the authors, and they bring their books to sell too, and every month, it's a different theme, different genre. I went to a novel idea in Alpharetta last week, and the genre was mystery and suspense. So it's a fun evening, and it's held at East Main Cafe, in the Audio Intersection Building. And just for fun, Cornhole League Play is coming to downtown Canton. You can register now for League Play, beginning Tuesday, March eighteenth, through May thirteenth, in Cannon Park. The seven-week league includes a season-ending tournament with championship trophy and other prizes. You can register at cornholeatl.com and click on Canton. Country Rock Music Festival is March third and fourth, at Etowah River Park. Over twenty hours of live bands, carnival games, rock walls, mechanical bulls, and more. You can go to crmusicfestival.com for more details and purchase your tickets. Cherokee County History Museum and Visitors Center has an ongoing exhibit through February seventeenth, called Mapping Cherokee, featuring, featuring the twentieth-century map collection of Lat Ridgeway in the Cherokee County History Museum. And also Stranger Than You Knew, a presentation on the Universalist of Waleska and their influence on the South will be presented by Dr. Ken Wheeler of Reinhardt University on Tuesday, February twentieth, at seven PM, at the Rock Barn. This program is free and open to the public. At the Canton Theater, you can get advance tickets on sale for Driving Miss Daisy. The, it's by Alfred Gury, presented by the Cherokee Theater Company, on March ninth through eighteenth. Contact Theater for more times and ticket prices. At the Cherokee Arts Center, they'll be hosting J.R. Cochrane Comedy Show on March third. Contact the Arts Center for show time and tickets. That's all.
Thank you, anyone else have any? Okay, I'll try to get that right next time. Okay, in your agenda package, you have the minutes from the February the first, twenty eighteen, meeting. Are there any corrections or changes to be made to that?
Motion's approved, second?
We have a motion and a second to approve. Mr. Young seconded that, Mr. Grant made the motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor, say the five, saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? All members voting for the motion. Uh, you were not here, yeah, yeah, that's right. Five oh one abstentions, it's Nick was out at the last meeting, okay. Ten-minute public input period, we have Melissa and Matthew Harbers, is that right? Okay.
Is this loud enough?
It should be.
Good evening, my name is Melissa Harbers, and this is my husband, Matt. We are business owners of Pinky's Up Beer and Wine in Roswell, in residence of the city of Canton. You seem to have an issue with establishments like ours that serve and sell beer and wine, but do not sell food. So I ask, is it a decision of economics, or is it of morals? I'm here to state with facts and numbers that show your recommendations from the Alcohol Ordinance Committee summary are limiting and primitive. I've been a resident of Canton for three years. Last year, my husband and I moved to Raleigh, North Carolina, where businesses like mine are well-respected and found in almost every shopping center. From afar, we have been monitoring and celebrating the progressive updates to the alcohol ordinances of the city of Canton, and it played a large role in our decision to move back. Unfortunately, those progressive ordinances are now under attack. As a business owner, I had the decision on what business to open and where to open it. Numbers played a vital role in our decision. I want to share some of those numbers with you. According to a survey by restaurantowners.com of four hundred and eighty-nine restaurant owners, the median startup cost to open a restaurant is four hundred and ninety-four dollars, I'm sorry, four, four hundred thousand ninety-four, there we go, sorry.
Five hundred thousand dollars.
Five hundred thousand, thank you. My concept is one-fourth that cost, making my barrier to entry significantly less than what your proposed ordinances require. According to the University of California, Berkeley, the predictive average lifespan of a restaurant is only four and a half years. While seventy-six percent of microbreweries that have opened in modern era since nineteen eighty are still open. In twenty sixteen, restaurant industry sales represented only one point five percent sales increase gain compared to ten percent in the current year market. Using these numbers, it was a more sound business decision to not open up an establishment that requires fifty percent of my sales to come from food. The following numbers are the median household income for the following cities. Canton, fifty-nine thousand two hundred and seventy-four dollars. Woodstock, seventy-three thousand three hundred and thirty-two. Alpharetta, ninety-five thousand nine hundred and nineteen dollars. Roswell, eighty-five thousand four hundred and nine dollars. I find these numbers important, along with any business looking to decide where to open, as a means to determine whether or not this location will be viable. Though proximity to the city of Atlanta does become a factor, accessibility to lively amenities attract people with higher disposable income. The city of Canton is the least viable city in the area in the eyes of prospective businesses. With the proposed restrictive ordinances, the city council is doing its part to make sure that city of Canton continues to be unattractive to residents with higher income, as well as potential businesses. What does that say about a city council that forces one of its own residents to open up their business in a neighboring city due to its restrictive ordinances? It says it is a short-sighted council. If your decision is not influenced by economics, then maybe it's a moral decision. In a study conducted in four major cities published by the National Institute of Health, it concluded there is negligible correlation to proximity to alcohol sellers and the amount that people drink. Meaning that having places where people can have a drink without food does not increase what people drink. The last numbers I would like to point out are numbers that should keep you up at night. Number one, based on one hundred and seventy thousand sexual harassment claims filed with the U.S. Equal Employment Opportunity Commission between nineteen ninety-five and twenty sixteen, Harvard Business Review reported that the restaurant industry is the leading industry in the U.S. for sexual harassment claims compared to any other industry. A twenty fourteen report from the Restaurant Opportunities Center United concluded that ninety percent of women in the food service industry have experienced a form of sexual harassment. Seventy percent of men in hospitality have experienced harassment on the job as well. In the claim files, full-service restaurants had ten times more complaints than in bars and limited-service establishments. Unfortunately, these are only reported statistics, and as many as seventy-one percent of incidences go unreported. While your misplaced moral righteousness states that going to a restaurant and having multiple drinks without ordering any food is different than a patriot coming through an establishment like mine, the reality is, there is no difference. And while you presume requiring an establishment to have fifty percent of its sales come from food is better for our community, the stats tell a completely different story. If you decide to reinstate these antiquated ordinances, know that you are saying no. You're saying no to businesses that have more prosperity potential than ones you claim to be better for our community. You're saying no to additional revenue for businesses that surround ones like mine. You're saying no to tax revenue generated by increased home values driven by accessibility to a lively nightlife ventures, which take away money from our police and fire departments, or any city municipality benefited by growth. You're saying no to me, a business owner, who has high moral convictions, convictions, that my place, my place of business be a place where men and women can work in a safe and harassment-free environment. And finally, you're saying that Canton City residents are intelligent enough to vote, but too irresponsible to decide which establishments they want to frequent. Instead, you should allow the citizens of Canton to decide with our own dollars which businesses we want to survive in our city. If you would like to review the information I presented today, I can provide you with a list of sources I referenced in my speech. In closing, I want to leave you with words from a more influential person than myself, former Prime Minister of the United Kingdom, Harold Wilson. He stated, "He who rejects change is the architect of decay. The only human institution which rejects progress is the cemetery." Thank you.
Thank you. Keith Mahoney?
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. I am a Canton resident, I have been a Canton resident for the past three years. But I am what you would call a product of the South. The upstate of South Carolina is my home, even though I was born in Virginia. I've lived in Maryland, Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, and Florida. That's about as South as you can possibly get. So I bring that up because of some facts that I've heard in, in every one of the southern communities I've lived in over the years. I've heard people fight against progress, they have fought against any kind of change. We like to keep things the way they are, we like things the way they are, the way things have been. So I'm going to address the alcohol ordinance issue. I think Canton might be taking a major step backwards for some of the wrong reasons. They're fighting progress, well, code words. We're fighting the progress of African-American citizens in our community, we're fighting the progress of young people in our community. Our recently-formed committee, that I think you formed, Mayor, it did have one African-American member, or two?
Yes, it had, at least one.
Were they businessmen, or were they from the clergy?
This one was from the clergy.
From the clergy. How many African-American businesses do we have in this community?
I don't know.
I've been searching for them for three years. I've talked to Pastor Dobbs at the AME Church, she says it really hasn't been a community where African-Americans have wanted to establish businesses. So my fear in, in fighting progress or change is we're fearful of African-Americans advancing in our community, fearful of young people advancing in our community. We can shake our heads no, but I've heard these same code words for, and we could use other code words many, many different times, it's change, we need to advance. Ben Franklin, who we, I think all can agree that, that we admire pretty much, he said that life's tragedy is we get old too soon and wise too late. My fear is that here in this city, we are getting old far too quickly by refusing to advance and refusing to change. I've noticed some of the recommendations that came from your committee, that packaged shales can only be from places that have fifteen hundred feet of floor space, no more than fifty percent of the floor space can be used for inventory. It sounds like government is trying to regulate how businessmen should run their businesses. Now, this is a beautiful building, one of the larger buildings downtown, just like the courthouse across the way. So government's a good business in this town, government employs a lot of people in this town. Why can't private sector individuals who are investing their time and treasure have the same opportunity to end up with something like this? If you're restricting them, they won't, Mayor. Your committee might be hampering the kind of growth that you say publicly that we want in this community. Terribly sorry, technology is not as easy for old guys like me. I believe in it, but it just doesn't move along that fast, it's kind of like my bones getting up in the morning. My father, who passed a bunch of years ago, and scary thing is, I look more and more like him every time I look in the mirror every day. He talked about different kinds of people, the, the ones who are immovable, those are movable, and the ones that kind of, kind of make things move, the movers and the shakers. He always said the movers take action, you know, they, they go and they get things done, while the immovable sit and scratch their heads, wondering how others can be so successful. City manager Peppers, you presided over a very growing, wonderful city before you came up here, and hopefully, you can help us replicate that. Woodstock is kind of where I, I go with my other Canton friends, when we want to go out and have a drink, and go to dinner, and maybe even do some shopping. Things that are really difficult in the downtown area here. Councilman Estes has opened a, a small facility across the way, Stout Scrowlers. I go there on Friday nights with some of my neighbors and friends, and the fun thing is, now that I'm an old guy, we have people in their twenties, thirties, and forties- is, now that I'm an old guy, we have people in their twenties, thirties, and forties who look up at me and they ask me for advice on things. They talk about their relationships, they talk about their businesses, they talk about politics, and they think because I'm old, I've got some answers. Well, I don't have as many answers as I have questions at this point in life. So, I'd like to leave with a very simple question. What can you do inside of this alcohol ordinance that will promote growth and not slow it down? It's inevitable, change is going to happen, so please be part of a positive growth. Mr. Peppers, be there for us. Mr. Mayor, councilwomen and men, please be there for us. We will be there for you. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Jeff, sorry, I can't read that.
Hang it on.
Oh, hang it on. Okay, that's a D, okay. I wasn't sure if it's a D or a C or L, okay.
Yeah, my penmanship's kind of rough.
That's good, it's fine. Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate the time this evening. I'm not sure I should be batting cleanup here after what they've said, but I'll just kind of reiterate and bring up some new points as it relates to me. I'm a nineteen-year Cherokee County resident. My wife and I moved up here from the busyness of the city in nineteen ninety-nine, and we moved to Woodstock, Georgia, where we had two children in the Town Lake area. As the children grew, we felt it appropriate to find a neighborhood in an area that would accommodate the kind of hustle and bustle of suburbia with kids that were two and four at the time. We were fortunate enough to land in the River Green community and have raised our family there ever since. We've been there coming up on twelve years in April. What happens now is with the kids, I've got an eighteen-year-old, he'll be eighteen tomorrow, and a sixteen-year-old, they're fairly self-sufficient, can do their own thing, so I have kind of grabbed onto the opportunity to fall back in love with my wife. And in doing so, we spend time out together, going out to dinners and going out and enjoying ourselves. Unfortunately, we spend a lot of time going back down to Woodstock because the opportunity presents itself for a date, to go out and listen to music, to have a few drinks. Stout's Growlers here in Canton was a beacon for me. I'm a craft beer enthusiast, have been for about twenty years. So, the opportunity to come up here and have a drink and enjoy downtown kitchen, steed, local dinors, some of the other great restaurants that are here, has been a good one. But I was alarmed here that there are some changes that are potentially in the works and felt it was my responsibility as a concerned citizen to come up here and voice my disparage for anything that doesn't progress this city, and it doesn't have to be like Woodstock, bravo for the job you did down there. But it's, we want it to progress in a way that embraces the demographic, which is the ninety-five-year-old to the ten-year-old. And I come from a small town called Dunedin, Florida. It's a coastal town just north of Clearwater, and there's nine different breweries there, and that's a huge attraction, but the population is no bigger than it is here in Canton. And you'll go out on any Saturday or Sunday where there's a festival, and you'll have people that are ninety years old there, and you'll have people that are ten years old there, and everyone's getting along and enjoying what the city has to offer. Canton has that potential. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Consent agenda, we have consideration to approve the Comcast franchise agreement. Actually, since it's only one item, I don't know that we really needed it to be on the consent agenda, but we can still deal with it. Is there a motion regarding that item? Well, it's something we talked about at length. Mr. Goodwin made the motion, we have a second. Mr. Yon seconded the motion. Any other discussion about that? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Under Old Business, request for discussion of Iris Park subdivision streets and streetlights. Mr. Allison, is he here tonight? No. Mr. Peppers, you want to make any comments on that? I know we've talked about it a little bit.
Yeah, what our plans are to do is to have the streets within Iris Park placed on the bidding document for our two thousand and eighteen paving program as an alternate. That way, we can surmise what the actual cost is to handle the streets out there, and we would bring that back to council along with whatever's collected in the add-on fee for that particular neighborhood and let you decide how you want us to spend those dollars at that point. As it relates to streetlights, we can't find an example anywhere else in the city where the city has paid for streetlights in the neighborhood before. If the neighborhood wants to put in streetlights, wants to work with the developer to put in streetlights, that would be fine. The city can pay for the electrical costs for those streetlights like we do in other neighborhoods, but I don't think the city should move forward with placing streetlights in that neighborhood.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
It seems that Mr. Allison was concerned about the number of streetlights that he thought were required, and as I understood it from Mr. Peppers, there's not a minimum or a maximum number of streetlights required. Is that right?
That's what I understand.
You know, I looked at the neighborhood from an aerial standpoint and compared it with some other neighborhoods of the same size. I don't know why they would have fifty-three streetlights. We would never suggest that many, that's way too much for that neighborhood. I think they could do with twelve and basically get the lighting that they need in the neighborhood, but it's not a number that the city imposed on them.
And if he knew that, I think that would help as he presents it to his neighbors. If they could get by with twelve, that's a whole lot better than, what, eighty-three?
Fifty-three. But I think what, if it's okay with council, I'll put this in a letter and mail it to Mr. Allison with basically outlining what the city can do to assist them and what they'll be responsible for.
Thank you. Okay, discussion of proposed Edoa Gold Bike Route and installation of the Sheros. We discussed that. Mr. Buckner, if you have anything else to add on that? Certainly can't speak to the council, but I suspect that most of the council members are certainly be in favor of doing what you had requested there, but I think it would probably all need to be contingent on the other agencies' approval as well, which would mean state and county, since this whole deal runs a lot through all three. Come on up. Yeah, come on up.
So, yeah, that makes total sense, and if, I don't know what, I mean, you know, you guys are the ones in the process, so if the motion is that we proceed to, at least I can say that the council approves this and we're ready to go, what do we need to know, what rules do we follow? I'm happy to continue making phone calls and emails.
What I was going to suggest, if it's okay, is just drafting a letter that basically says the city's in support of this. We're willing to do our portion of it, we just need to know that GDOT and the county are also willing to participate on their portions of it as well.
And actually, now that you mention that, Steve Azenbrack, I believe is his name, he's in management at City of Roswell, and what they do is a little bit more laissez-faire, I guess. They just have people write in, different citizens that want them, like if you want Sheros in front of your section, send an email in, and they just take care of it, so to speak, as long as it's not a threat. The Roswell city basically says, speak up, and we'll put one wherever you want one. So, he would probably, and I can forward an email thread from him to you to sort of say, hey, what is it that you do with GDOT? I mean, how do you have that conversation? So, I'll forward his info if that helps as a resource.
I think what we would probably do is work with GIS to draw up the map of it, to show the portions of it that are actually within the city limits that we're responsible for, the portion that we see GDOT responsible for and the portion we would see the county responsible for, and include it in the letter, and we can send a letter to Mr. Cooper, and we can send a letter to the area engineer for GDOT and say, this is what we're going to do? You know, do you have a timeframe for when you might be able to do your piece, or what are the requirements to get that approved on your side?
Yeah, of course, in general, the, on the one hand, yes, this is being discussed as the bike route. However, the main gist is just to get these things on the pavement, so, you know, downtown Canton's just got a little bit more inviting pedestrian activity, so to speak, sort of halfway pedestrian, I suppose. So, I'll also, I only say that just to bring up that, hey, by all means, we're not pushing for all of this to happen in one fail, like thirty-day swoop. If it happens in parts, I mean, that's fine.
Mr. Grant?
I answered the question.
Okay.
I just want to say I'm in support of this.
Do you think we need to, we should probably make a motion that we would approve this contingent on the other agencies' approval?
I mean, I think if y'all just want to vote in support of it, that way we can just figure out what the timing is to get it done on our sections, and we can have a conversation with the state and the county.
Okay, Mr. Grant?
Motion to support the bike route through the City of Canton contingent on county and state.
Okay, is that subject to the?
Yes, contingent on.
Contingent on the other agencies, all working together to get that done. We have a motion. Ms. McGrew seconded that motion. Any other discussion?
One more item of discussion. In the language, one thing that hasn't been mentioned much is if we're going to call it Edoa Gold Bike Route, I'm picturing something sort of like the wine country or wine route thing when you're going up four hundred and you can make a left and follow. There's like this grape thing that gets stuck on various signs throughout. That is also going to come up as an obvious issue, so.
We can do that on city routes, the county could do it on a county route, the state's going to require at least two hundred and fifty thousand trips on that route documented before they'll do any state signage.
Okay, then, well, I'd like you to know that clarification, but as far as that support document goes, if there's any support, any language in the document that supports that little signage as well, that would be just go ahead and knocking that out and not having to come back here again.
Okay. We have a motion in a sec. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose? All members voting for the motion. Thank you, Mike. Item C, approval of the two thousand and eighteen health insurance and benefit renewal. Ms. Waters?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have placed in front of you a draft booklet that was provided by MSI, thanks to Ms. Angela Thompson for drafting or designing that cover for us. Do you have any questions or anything over the last information we have shared with
Anyone have any questions on that? We did talk about this at our last meeting there. The deductible, I know, went up substantially.
It went from fifteen hundred to three thousand. However, the max out-of-pocket only rose by five hundred, meaning it went from forty-five hundred to five thousand, so there's still that stock out there that would help an employee.
Okay. Shall we, do I have a motion to approve the movement on this? We had a, you made the motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Mr. Goodwin seconded. I don't know if I heard.
I'll also say that I really appreciate the efforts that you did, Lori, to try to get the premiums down. I know that the employees for the city really appreciate that.
Well, I appreciate that, and it was a joint effort between myself, Mr. Peppers, and Mr. Ingram, as well as MSI Benefits Group, to try to research and gather as much as we can.
Looks like it's the best you could do, and it's very good.
Yes, ma'am, unfortunately, we do. Thank you.
Okay. We have a motion in a sec. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, item D, discussion of possible action to opt-in to the Metropolitan North Georgia Planning District Regional Program for Commercial Indoor Water Use. Mr. Otavian's here, if there are any questions. I think we talked about it at our work session, and I think it ends up, there's no cost involved to the city, at least at the current time, and should there be in the future, we would have an option to evaluate it at that time and decide if we wanted to opt out. Is that a fair statement?
That's pretty much it, yeah.
Okay. Anyone have any questions?
Motion to opt-in.
Okay, Mr. Goodwin made the motion to opt-in. Mr. Yon seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Okay, item E is the item regarding the annexation of a hundred point seven eight acres, okay, along Sam Nelson Road, that the petitioner or applicant has requested that they be allowed to withdraw without prejudice. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. I did present you with a copy of the letter from the Pacific Group earlier this week. We forwarded the email from the Pacific Group in which they have requested to withdraw both the annexation and zoning cases AX one seven one one dash oh oh three and case Z one seven one one dash oh oh three as it relates to the property on Sam Nelson.
Okay, Mr. Grant?
Just for clarification, withdrawn without prejudice would allow them to come back within a twelve-month period with a different plan or the same plan?
That is correct. Nothing could come back before council because there is a moratorium in regards to annexations that runs through April the fifth of this year. So, our office could not accept an application until May of this year at the earliest.
So, that was my next question. So, if they withdraw, they would have to start the process over again if they, and if they, if the moratorium happened to be extended, they would have to wait till after that extension to?
That is correct.
Okay, thanks. It's all one.
Anyone else have a comment, question? Okay, do we have a motion to allow them to withdraw without prejudice? Mr. Grant made the motion, Mr. Wilson made the second. Any other discussion or questions? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Oppose, no. All members voting for the motion. So, item F won't be an item, right? The next one is the zoning, so we won't discuss that, right?
Correct. You just allowed both cases to be withdrawn.
Okay. The next item, the discussion of possible action on case AX seventeen eleven dash oh oh one, the City of Canton proposed annexation of forty-five point one two acres near Birch Park Lane or Old Os Lane. This is the forty-five acres the city acquired in our consolidation agreement with Cherokee County for the fire district consolidation. And, you know, anyone have any comments on that? Mr. Grant?
Motion to approve that annexation?
I have a motion. Mr. Estes seconded the motion. I want to clarify one thing, that this will approve the annexation. Now, the planning commission had a condition on that, right?
Well, the planning commission in the, in regard to the next case, the zoning case.
Okay, so there'd be no condition or anything like that for the annexation of that forty-five acres? No buffer or anything like that, or any strip that would be left? Okay, so that's not?
That's up to the determination of council. The planning commission did recommend incorporating a buffer strip and leaving some unincorporated Cherokee County part of this project.
So, I would like to make this clear that, see, by leaving that buffer, they were saying it wouldn't create an island. I'd like to make it clear that we are not leaving a buffer on this.
That's not part of the motion.
Or an unincorporated strip, I should say. That's part of the motion?
Yes.
Okay, and we have a sec. Any other discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I was not able to attend the planning and zoning meeting on this, and I understand there were some objections by residents in the area. Were those objections smoothed over? Were they rectified?
All of the comments that were made by citizens were not necessarily objections to the annexation, nor were they objections to the zoning of the property. Their concerns dealt with the Birch Park Lane, Old Os Lane accessibility, all of that, and enforcement. and enforcement issues that were presented before the planning commission falls to Cherokee County because that road and property is in unincorporated Cherokee County.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second on the annexation question. Any other comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? All members voting for the motion. Now, as far as the zoning of that property, the recommendation is that it be zoned SU, which is a special use, and this is the property that would be the Edoa River Park East or whatever it ends up being called, but it connects via the interstate with Edoa River Park. And so, we are already working on this to develop plans on, for extending our trail system up through that way, and it will extend it quite, quite a distance. Do we have a motion to approve the zoning SU?
Motion.
Okay. Ms. McGrew made the motion. Mr. Goodman seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? All members voting for that motion. Okay. Discussion of possible action on the resolution to adopt capital improvement element and five-year short-term work plan annual update impact fee program.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I did give you a paper copy of an updated package, what was in the original package. The year-end financial statement did not include an additional footnote that Georgia Department of Community Affairs requested be added to that year-end statement. I have highlighted that in the handout I presented to you earlier before the meeting started. We have received written confirmation from Atlanta Regional Commission, Georgia Department of Community Affairs, that our capital improvements element and five-year short-term work program annual update does comply with state law, and we are free to adopt it. Again, this is because the city of Canton has impact fees. It's a requirement of state law that we have to formally adopt this annual update.
We have to adopt this before we actually finalize our impact fees?
The impact fee is, already have an assessment and a schedule. We are going to be moving into a whole new methodology and update with a new fee schedule later on this year.
So, those can be amended?
Yes.
Impact fees can be changed.
This will be amended as part of that update with Ross and Associates later on this year.
Okay, so your request is that we adopt this program?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion or any other questions again? We have a motion to adopt this.
A motion that we adopt this program?
Yep. Mr. Yon made the motion. Mr. Grant seconded that motion. Any other discussion? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? No? All members voting for the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council members.
Thank you. Okay, next item, discussion of possible action on the alcohol ordinance committee recommendations of ordinance changes. Okay? Mr. Estes?
Thank you. So, I guess, and I wasn't here the last meeting, but so I didn't get a chance to kind of share just my, my thoughts and representation, so I guess first I want to say thank you to the committee for their time and energy being involved in this committee. But, you know, before I start, though, I want to make sure that I speak, you know that I'm speaking to you tonight not as a co-owner of Stout's Growlers, but instead as a servant of our citizens, and my views and comments really represent the feedback from, from these members, members of the community. In fact, tonight I will abstain from, from the vote, you know, due to the potential for, has a financial impact to me, so, but, but I do want to share, share some stuff on, on behalf of, of my constituents. So, I'm really, I'm passionate about this, really for, for three things. You know, one, I'm listening to the feedback of our constituents. It's very top of mind for them. Our citizens want more options for leader, leisure. I've heard this over and over from so many folks as, as I, that I've met during the election, as well as that I continue to hear today, and we certainly heard some folks speak passionately about that. Second thing is, you know, I'm really passionate about economic development and sustainable growth for, for our city. With our rivers and trails and parks and the diversity that we have, we have a lot to offer, and we have a lot that differentiates us from the rest of our, from, from other communities. And then, the third point would be is, you know, I am a business owner and investor in the community, and, and I, through that investment, I certainly have educated myself on business models and understand the laws that pertain to alcohol. Over the ti, over time, these business models have been built, some have failed and some have been perfected. The same goes with the laws that pertain to alcohol. They will only get more complex, and we'll need, will always need to be evaluated. While we want to build and grow Canton our way, it's fair to look around the region and the state and the country and leverage best practices because it's what our citizens are doing today. We have wonderful restaurants and shops downtown and all across the town, and, but this is really only a start. We lack the options for, for our citizens to stay and relax and enjoy what we have to offer and what we can offer. Our citizens are taking their dollars, and we heard certainly from, from others to Roswell and Alpharetta, Woodstock, and Marietta, and Kennesaw, and, and all different places, just to name a few. When you ask them why they're doing that, and I've asked many of them, and certainly I've gotten plenty of feedback, it's because they want more leisure options. They want more variety. They want more reasons to come and stay. Most are not looking for bars, but, you know, they are looking for, again, the options. The business models of, as I said before, are changing, and they're always, especially business models with alcohol, are always changing. As you travel around, there are many businesses that are serving beer and wine without the sale of food, or deriving fifty percent of their total sales from, from food sales. There are craft beer and wine markets opening, comedy venues, movie theaters, and other, many more locations that are producing or are pouring ancillary, having ancillary pouring These are all quality business models, and they really focus on the service and the experience for the customers. These are not bars in the typical sense. Referring back to the, the alcohol ordinance committee meeting notes, at the first meeting, the following goals were introduced by the mayor. One, let's make the ordinance and process fair for all concerned. We had a lot of different rules, some for historic downtown versus others in, in the rest of the city, and, and I think certainly we, we did that. We wanted to determine how to administer alcohol sales in the city, and then finally, they were asked to determine what the city should look like in the future with relation to alcohol, alcohol sales, and I think this is where we fell short. Our alcohol ordinance still do not address, as written, the complexity that is inherent with these new business models, and I certainly do not feel that the new ordinance, as it is today, helps in this. All we did with this ordinance was set a stake in the ground to say, if you do not serve food, you do not serve alcohol. Despite the council voting unanimously this past summer to approve a Growler store, really any Growler store would fall into this, being able to serve onsite without food as long as the majority of their businesses, business was from selling packaged goods. It is my position that we do not approve this ordinance as written, but instead come back and leverage the language and focus more on what do we want to be when we grow up, while addressing the alcohol business model requested by our citizens. As an example, I believe, or I believe that making an attempt to address the complexity of business involved, of businesses involved in alcohol, and having a firm, proactive position and a baseline set of laws that needs, needs to be our focus going forward. We'll never get everything perfect, and I'm sure we could figure out how to get eighty percent established and correct, but it will allow us to be less reactive in the future. As an example, if a brewery was choosing between Canton and Roswell today, where do you think they would go? Would they even consider Canton, or would they just want to work and partner with a city who's already set a baseline to support their business model? I don't believe we are anti-breweries, but this ordinance sends a message that we are not open-minded and progressive. There are multiple examples of businesses that have ignored our city, have gone elsewhere because of the perception that we are not open for business. Finally, I'd say, you know, I know that we are, we have a lot of great things going on in this city. We heard from the mayor last, two, two meetings ago on the state of the city. There's a lot to be proud of. There's a lot of momentum, and I'm certainly very proud to, to be a part of that momentum and to be able to partner with the mayor and council. And I know that we're open for business, and we have a lot to offer. Let's just not get lost in, in the perceptions again. And, and again, as I said, my position would be, even though I'm not going to vote, I will abstain to not vote for this ordinance.
Thank you.
Mr. Grant.
Yes, I think, just picking up on Nick's last comment that, that, you know, that alcohol and alcohol ordinance, I just want to make it clear, this is my opinion, that it's a very, very small part of everything that we do and everything that we are, a very small part of our progress that we've made and will continue to make, and, and I think just the nature of, of the subject that it, it implies a lot of things, and different things to different people, and so, I, I try to look at it in, in very, you know, very rational terms, and, and it's, it's hard not to take, you know, take the motions into considerations, but I, I try to take the judgment out of it on, on both sides, so, but, but I think with that being said, I, and I know that we've talked about, and I think our past experience has proven that we, that we are open-minded, and I think that we have made lots of changes, and I'm proud of the changes we've made in the past couple of years to it. And then, we talked about that even whatever we decide to do on this, that we would consider, you know, any business, you know, coming to us, and we, we would consider making that change, and, and I agree that, that, you know, these business models are changing very rapidly, and other state is dealing with that, and other cities is dealing with that. And I do think that's exactly what we did, you know, with the last update, that we had a business come to us and, you know, made their case, and we heard from our constituents at that time, and we voted to update that, and, and it, I saw that as not just for one business, but a, a class of business, of craft beer and wine, and so, I'm not in favor of kind of giving it a right to a class of business and then kind of taking it back, and so, I wouldn't want to see this kind of go one step back there. Again, I think the other recommendations and, and, you know, leveling the playing field and not just downtown, and, and, you know, all restaurants are on the same playing field, that, that's, that makes sense to me. But, you know, there are, and I was looking at this a little bit closer, and then I, I start, I still, still believe that there are those kind of gray areas, and I think craft beer and wine markets fall into that area, and then there's, there's something between restaurants and bars, and there are going to continue to be more things between those, and I was just thinking, it's, it's kind of like the Cheryl lanes for bikes. We don't have bike paths, but there's, you know, it's kind of a hybrid. There's a, you know, it's something different than, you know, a pure bike path and, you know, a, a, an actual traffic lane, but there's different classifications and ways of looking at this. And so, another thing I was thinking about, too, is that, that right now, as this ordinance, the change is written, I believe, if I'm, if I'm not incorrect on this, and I may well be, that right now, that we had voted to allow the AMC fifteen theaters to serve, and the way this is written, as I understand it, that with the, you know, kitchen that would consist of a refrigerator, a stove or grill permanently installed, would not allow them to serve because I don't think a hot dog rotisserie or a popcorn machine or a nacho cheese melter would qualify as a silver grill, so I think that's, again, kind of a different, again, it's another, you know, another classification that needs to be considered in this unless, you know, our goal is to, to allow them not to serve either, so I don't think that is covered in this, my understanding of it, the way that is written. So, again, I think there's concerns, and, and I would like to take the input of the committee, and I'd like to take input of residents and council and everyone into consideration. I think everyone's intentions here and motives are, are very good, and, and to move us forward in the right way and for what's right for Canton, and I think we're all proud of that, and, and I just, you know, I, I know we've made changes to ordinance, and I know it needed to be reviewed, and I totally supported that. I personally don't think that we have to change it tonight. I don't know that the existing one with the last update is, is so flawed that, you know, that it has to be changed to this, or if we need to make other considerations. I do believe that it will be a work in progress as, as we go. I just, again, I just don't want to see us to go one step backwards, you know, from where we were the last update is, is my main concern, just because of the message that it would send for these potential businesses are out there that who, that would consider Canton and some of the new developments that we are thinking about, or breweries, breweries, and I know we discussed that before, and I know we're open to that, and we, I mean, there was one before that I think council made a lot of concessions for, and, and open, and I think we would be open to that. But I, I, I just want people to know that very clearly, that, that council would be open to considering that, and, and that doesn't mean we would, you know, rubber stamp anything, but that we'd be open to considering those things, and, and I just want to make sure our, our ordinance reflects that. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson, you were waving. Yes. Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to address this issue if I can. I want to remind the council that a committee consisting of Canton businessmen and businesswomen were, and citizens, was appointed to review the current ordinance. They were not asked to look into the future for additional changes and upgrades. They presented to us a simplified version of an alcohol ordinance. If this council should see a future need for amending the ordinance, there is nothing preventing us from doing that. Therefore, based on the research and findings of the committee, from a three-month deliberation, I make a motion to approve the current ordinance as presented.
Ms. Wilson made the motion. Mr. Goodman seconded the motion. Ms. McGrew, you had your line.
I do. Thank you very much. I think a lot of concern has come from the unanimous decision that council made last year to allow seventy-five percent merchandise sales and twenty-five percent pouring sales at the Growler shop. And because I, I felt that a few people were concerned about this becoming a bar, and Canton was going to have bars, I sent an email to Chief Mitchell. Thank you. And so, if the data has changed, Chief Mitchell, would you please speak up? But I asked chief, had any calls been made for officers to go to Stout's for drunken disorderly conduct since they began with the twenty-five, seventy-five pouring? And chief said no. I asked in the email if any DUIs had been sourced back to patrons of Stout's, and he said no. And I asked, had there been any calls for drunken disorderly, dancing in the streets and other such rampant behavior on North Street or in downtown Canton, having been precipitated by patrons of Stout's, and he said no. So, to me, that tells me that there's not a rowdy, chaotic bar atmosphere there, and this ordinance speaks to this establishment. And I wanted to tell you that I've been in there many times because it's no secret that I enjoy adult beverages. On different times, I, gosh. I heard laughing. I, I was in Stout's one evening with my husband, and... I, I was, um, in Stouts one evening with my husband, and he, we went in and there was somebody on their laptop working, having a glass of wine. Another time, there was a family in there with pizza, playing games, and they had their dog under the table with them. And another time, I was in there and there were people for their book club. So, Stouts has a book club. They have music on the weekends. So, I don't see this as a rowdy, crazy, drunken stabbing and shooting environment. In fact, it's just the opposite, it's a family environment. I'm concerned that with the, this part of the ordinance says that the, any establishment who falls under the seventy-five, twenty-five pouring allowance upon their sale, they would go back into the new ordinance so that there would be no pouring allowed. And I have concerns about that impacting the resale value of a business, and the decision that we make could impact resale value. I look forward to the time when boutiques and sporting goods stores might offer a glass of beer or a glass of wine because I know how much easier it would be for some friends or spouses of a person shopping in a sporting goods store to sit down and have a glass of something and sip and make that painful time go quicker. And I'm sure my husband would enjoy a sip of something while I'm trying on dresses. Um, I look forward to those days. And I also look forward to continually, continually, continuing to grow our alcohol ordinance so that we are more ready for business models to come to Canton rather than being reactive. I would like to put forward a foot of, we're ready now, we want you to come to Canton, we're open for business and all is well here. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Young.
Well, I'll start off by saying that I am not quite a teetotaler, but I'm pretty close to it. Um, so, this doesn't really, I'm not the target for these businesses, pretty much. But I also am a realist, and I understand that this is a huge part of what people look for in their communities now. And I feel like we have made a lot of good progress to this point. I agree that, and with quite a few of the recommendations of the committee, that to clean up, and that's what we wanted, is to clean up our ordinance, and I think they added some more teeth to enforcement, and those things I think are really good. But I really am hesitant to take a step backward because I feel we have crafted a good compromise for a Growler type or even a wine bar, I would think, would fall under the same category. And I just, I don't want to send the message out that we're not open to innovation, open to new ideas. I think that would send, stepping us, taking a step backward in that regard would send a message that we're not interested in new ideas and we're not interested in the kind of growth that our citizens are starting to demand. So, I think there are good parts to this, to the recommendations, but I don't think all of it is a good idea for right now for our city. So, I would like to see us do a little more work on this and see what we can keep the parts that we feel make progress for our city, because that's what we're trying to do, is clean up an old ordinance that has been patched and hammered on and beat on and painted over several times, and not do anything that would send the signal that we're taking a step backwards. So, I would like to see us take some more time with this because, as Mr. Grant said, this is not something that has to be done tonight. It's not something that is an emergency, so I would just like to see us do a little more work on it before we pass, just pass something. Um, I do appreciate the committee's work, and I think they worked very hard on it, and they did what we asked them to do and bring them back the recommendations, but then I think we need to put in the work to take those recommendations and integrate them into a cohesive plan that does not make it look like we're taking a step backwards. And that's just my opinion.
Mr. Estes?
I just want to just follow up real quick, and I agree with what Mr. Young's saying about, um, I think there is good stuff in there, um, in, in the ordinance, some of the recommendations, but I get a little concerned about how it went from alcohol to must-have-a-kitchen to now food trucks fell in there, and I, it just kind of got some spider legs there. So, so I think that's another point that kind of concerned me as I reviewed the, the ordinance. And then I just wanted to respectfully address Ms. Wilson's, um, point. According to the minutes, it says, and I'll read them here, "Mayor Hoggood notices appreciation for the individuals to the city and value their time and efforts in reviewing the alcohol city ordinance. He asks that the committee look to assist the city in doing the following: make the ordinance and process fair for all concerned," which, you know, again, I think we did that, "determine how to administer alcohol cities in the sale, in the, uh, sales in the city," which, again, I think we did that. And the last point is determine what the city should look like in the future with relation to alcohol sales. And so, for me, that involves addressing the, the what do we want to be when we grow up? And so, I think to, to what others have stated, I think that's where we can balance, figure out how do we take the great recommendations that we have, and then also look forward to effectively be more proactive, less reactive on how we're going to address this industry in the future.
Okay. Anyone else?
Okay, although it's very clear that I won't be voting, uh, I would, I would like to make a few comments. First, let me say that I do respect the opinions of these council members, who I may not always agree with, and certainly they don't always agree with me, uh, as well as the opinions of our citizens. And I also respect the opinion of the twelve committee members who worked hard for more than three months in public, open meetings that were available for the public to come and make comments if they chose, they could come in to those meetings. And they ended up making recommendations. This is not about not wanting alcohol in our city. We have that, there's no doubt about it. Uh, I think most of us would like to see packaged liquor sales, but that's not a decision this council can make. That requires, uh, registered, uh, thirty-five percent of our registered voters at the last election, which would be approximately five thousand signatures. And I know there's been some attempts at that, but that has to be, that has to be done, it can't be done by the council, but it has to come to the council with that petition in order for us to do that. Let me say that the, the makeup of the citizen committee, there were twelve citizens there. There were boomers on there, and there was millennials. There was men, there was women, and, and it was racially inclusive. There were business owners, there was college professors, there was a bartender, there were residents from Soleil, Laurel Canyon, Great Sky, and downtown. So, it's, it's pretty, pretty well across the board. And I said, as I said, the committee met for more than three months in public meetings going over our alcohol ordinance with an eye to review some of the confusion that we have in our, uh, current ordinance, and to make the ordinance simpler and fair to, to all concerned. The ordinance we have now treats the sales of alcohol for consumption on premises differently for different businesses. Some that sell alcohol for consumption on premises cannot exceed forty percent alcohol to food sales, others fifty percent, while another doesn't have a food requirement and cannot exceed twenty-five percent of alcohol sales for consumption on premises. Why the difference? The, uh, current ordinance has been amended many times. In fact, it was amended, you know, three or four times, I think, for, for, for the Growler store. Uh, but the Growler, uh, owners came in originally, and this council was very open, and we graciously agreed to approve that and was happy to do so. And we also approved several changes to that. Was the ord, I don't know if the ordinance wasn't exactly right or what happened to make it, uh, more feasible, but that required several changes to make it better. And even, you know, as, as it was mentioned there, food trucks got thrown into some, some parts of this, and, uh, you know, I don't know anyone who is opposed to food trucks and consistent with what Ms. McGrew had, uh, recommended. I think food truck ordinance ought to be a separate ordinance and not tied into the However, brick and mortar restaurants that have spent, in my opinion, hundreds of thousands of dollars on build-out, including tens of thousands of dollars, uh, on kitchen equipment, in my opinion, should be offended by a proposal that lets a mobile unit pull up to the front or back door of a bar and then be called a restaurant. These units are not under the Health Department inspection, as is a restaurant, but are under the Department of Agriculture. And I'm not saying one's any better than the other, but it complicates things when you have two halves of a restaurant that have to report to different agencies and have to maintain separate records of sales so as not to exceed the percentage requirements of alcohol ordinance. And this would be impossible to enforce. And if the percent did exceed, did the bar sell too much alcohol or did the truck sell too little food? The committee also discussed the opportunity for anyone wishing to start a brewery or wine shop or other businesses where consumption on premises occurs, uh, to come before the council and request any change they'd like to our council. I don't think they were opposed to that as such. I think that they put that off as a separate entity that, you know, uh, the petitioner could, if, if there was a, a bird in the hand, I think this council very, would, would move very favorably to, to that, uh, to achieve what a petitioner probably won't. I, I have a little doubt of that. Uh, but I think that putting, uh, in the ordinance, something that you know you're probably going to have to change in order to make it palatable for somebody coming in, because it's going to be, you know, everyone's going to be a little bit different. And I'm not sure you could put a standard ordinance that didn't need to be changed, uh, in there when someone comes in for a brewery, because they may have to have a zoning, they may have to have something else, it might be certain requirements. But it also gives the city some control about how it comes in as well. Maybe it's a little more difficult. Government's slow, unfortunately. We, in my opinion, we don't need to put in our ordinances now those things and those possibilities, that we should take our time and shape an amendment to our ordinance to meet the needs of the new business. Not putting something in our ordinance, uh, we know will most likely, uh, be inadequate to meet the need of the applicant. I understand that selling alcohol is, you know, the more alcohol you sell, the better the business is, and I know that bars could be profitable. We hear some say that, oh, we don't want bars, but their actions, in many cases, tell a completely different story. Canton has a downtown where you can take your children to the theater or events and feel safe even late in the evening. An entertainment district, which has also been thrown out there and discussed, could very well change all that, especially if we continue to allow alcohol sales without any food availa, food availability. That doesn't mean you have to eat it. This means it needs to be available. The principal basis for this unanimous recommendation of the alcohol committee was that there should not be consumption on premises without availability of food. That was the basic premise. And I've, I guess I've asked myself the question several times, what do you call a business that sells nothing but alcohol with consumption on premises and no food availability? I mean, some could say maybe that, that is the definition of a bar. I don't know, but it was, it's wine and, and malt beverages in this case only. When I see hashtag Canton Forward, I get the feeling that this means that Canton is truly moving forward to a higher quality of life here in the city, where we demand higher quality development and a lifestyle, and we protect those qualities that have made our city so desirable. Of our twenty-seven thousand citizens, approximately twenty thousand came into our city just in the last two decades. Why did they come and why are they still coming? I think I can safely say it wasn't just for alcohol. It is not easy to move our city forward while protecting our city's own character. It's tough. I mean, it's, it's easy to let her slide. It is, it is a slow downhill slide for our city in some cases. We have to, we have to be sure that's not what we want to happen. I know some here, uh, from constituents, that we, we want all the frills of the nightlife, but I suppose that what you hear depends on the circle you run in. Quite frankly, and, and really no pun intended, I run in a lot of circles. The, and I also hear a wide variety of opinions. I've heard opinions from people on both sides of this issue, back and forth, and everybody's got an opinion what you should, shouldn't do, and that comes with the territory, and I, and I appreciate hearing from people regardless of what it is, and I respect their opinion. And I can tell you, there are those on both sides of that issue that are, uh, some are interested, some are not interested in a late-night entertainment district or other issues. This city has progressed so much in the last few years, especially from our alcohol perspective. And I know to hear some of this stuff tonight, you'd think, man, we way back in the forties, but we're not. We've come a long way, I can tell you. When I came into office, you couldn't have a beer at any, any event in this city. No event. You couldn't have a beer. That was one of the first things we did. We put in, but we did it methodically, and we moved it progressively. We put it in as, uh, like a beer garden at special events. You had to stay behind or in a tent or something like that, but you could do it. Children under the age of eighteen couldn't go in there, twenty-one or whatever. But we knew that was a step in the right direction, and that's what we want to do on all this, really. Keep moving along, not, not jumping too far, too fast, but keep progressing. That's what we want to do. Just, uh, we, uh, changed, uh, the, uh, from beer gardens, then we went to allowing beer to be, uh, sold and to be carried around in the entire event area. So, that's another step that we've done. We permitted a Growler store, of course. We changed our ordinance for brew pubs. We've been very progressive, but reasonable with our alcohol ordinance. Um, in my opinion, uh, that's the approach we need to be taking. An ordinance must address public health, safety, and general welfare of our citizens. I mean, that's really the purpose of an ordinance. It must be fair to all. Under our current, uh, Growler ordinance sales for consumption on premises, it cannot exceed twenty-five percent. Now, where did that number come from? Twenty-five percent? It's an arbitrary number. Why not fifty percent? There is no difference between sitting at the bar in DK and drinking beer or wine for several hours and eating, and eating no food and going to a Growler store and sitting and drinking beer or wine for the same amount of time? But yet, there's a difference in the percentage in the sales. I, I, I have a hard time understanding that. I suppose from a legal standpoint, it would be hard to defend a lawsuit to change from twenty-five to fifty. While the fifty percent is also arbitrary as well, if all are the same percentage, any legal action challenging the arbitrary percentage is probably less likely to be Anyway, I'll be quiet here in a minute, okay? Just give him one more minute, I'll be through. I believe we should move forward with the ordinance, uh, prepared based on the recommendations of the Alcohol Ordinance Study Committee, which is not going backwards because no one in business today is worse off than before. And the ordinance will be much more concise, clear, and fair. It's better now, the, the proposed ordinance is undoubtedly better than the, the, uh, existing ordinance. And in fact, the alcohol percentage has been expanded for some businesses. This was a unanimous recommendation of the committee. I think going against the recommendation would indicate a lack of appreciation for those citizens and the efforts that they spent. And it'd be sort of like the council approving a food truck, the parking of a food truck every day at lunch in front of the Hoagie Shop, which would be a bad thing. And under the proposed, uh, ordinance, the percentage of alcohol sales has been made more uniform. And under the proposed ordinance, the percentage of alcohol sales has been made more uniform, better, not worse. The ordinance is less confusing and somewhat simpler, and the ordinance, as recommended, is more fair, I think. Okay? I'm through.
Mr. Goodman.
Okay.
I too want to chime in, because Canton's a special place to me. I've been here all my life and seen a lot of change. And for you that have come in in the last few years and don't see the change, it is coming and it has been pretty fast in the last five years that we've been here. There's several things that bother me about wanting to have an uneven playing field. Restaurants that have been here in Canton, they paid for kitchens and food trucks come in and take their business and they've had lean years. Canton hadn't always been. We had a great, great town and a lot of things happening, but in 2008, as most of you know, they turned down an economy, hit everybody pretty hard. So it hasn't always been a great thing, but we're certainly moving along right now. We appreciate every one of you that are here. We appreciate Nick and his business. But these people are, that were on this committee are pillars of the community. They aren't just some Joe Blow that came and said, hey, I want to be on this. You know, those meetings were open. Anybody could have come and anybody could have given their suggestions then. We didn't hear many of you. It's, I think, a fair synopsis of what should happen. I have a great deal at stake in this town. I have six children, five that are adults and one that's 10 years old. Started over again here, adoption. But, you know, it's, it's the future. And Canton is not like Woodstock. It does not like Roswell. It does not like Sandy Springs or Buckhead, and nor do most people that live here want it to be. It's a special place to live. Our taxes are low. We've made sure of that through the years. We have friendly people. We have people that care about each other, and we try to make this the best town. We didn't get number one city in Georgia by just doing whatever we wanted to. We had a special goal and a special plan, and we lived that out. One other thing I wanted to mention is that one big concern of mine is the amount of alcohol in the, in the craft beers that are sold. I know that, you know, if you drink one of those, you get about two and a half times, that's what I understand, the amount of alcohol in a, in a regular beer. And if you don't have food, a couple, two or three of those, I really am scared about the safety of people. And I'll give you, for instance, I was, about two years ago, my son and his friend were coming from Florida State to our house in Florida, and it was late at night because they had come in from the football game and got run off the road at 2:00 in the morning in a ravine with about three feet of water. The person was drunk. He didn't, he didn't even stop. The car turned over, upside down. My son and the other boy managed to get out of that without drowning. And at 2:00 in the morning, this was out in an area where there wasn't much traffic. And luckily, a paperman came by at that time and saw them and took them to the hospital in Panama City. I got the call at 2:00 in the morning from the hospital saying, your son, we think, has a broken neck. That is not a good call to get, anytime. And it made me very aware of alcohol from then on. Fortunately, that was not the case. They did find out that he had some damage, but he did not have a broken neck, and he was able to, to, you know, be able to do whatever he wanted to in the next few years. But it's a scary thing. And I am not really for a high concentration of alcohol. I'm certainly not for a high concentration of alcohol and no food. I just am not. And it's, there's a reason for that law. Our lawmakers put it into effect. There's a reason that these people in this committee voted for it that way. And I certainly don't want to see our neighbors, our friends, people I've grown up, you've grown up with, or your neighbors be faced with that. I think it's, I think it's a step in the wrong direction. I think we can make progress. We want to be fair to everybody. But that's my story. I just feel very strongly about that. Thank you.
Mr. Grant.
And then Ms. Wilson.
Yes, I just wanted to make kind of one final comment. I want to reiterate that I appreciate the service of the committee, and I've heard everyone on this council say that I have friends and neighbors on that committee and I appreciate their service. And I do think we listened to them, and I've heard people say there were some very good recommendations that came out of that. I was, more importantly, I think is first, first and foremost, we're here to serve our constituents and what the majority of our constituents wants, and it's certainly not, we can't please all of them all the time. But I just wanted to say that's, that's our first, our first obligation is to our citizens and to our constituents. And I've talked to a lot of them, and so that, I do appreciate committees, all of our committees and our boards and our volunteers that put in countless of hours to move the city forward. It's certainly not just us up here. It's a community effort. But, but I'm here, you know, and I don't always vote how I personally feel. I vote how, for the constituents that I represent. So I just want to make that clear, so.
Thank you. Ms. Wilson.
As I've listened to all of us, I think we all are about on the same page. We understand that the ordinance, as it is, as it was presented to us, took a lot of work, three months' study and deliberation, but we do already see that there probably need to be some changes. But what I'm appealing to you tonight as council members, don't throw out the baby with the bathwater. Let's adopt what they have brought to us tonight, and then we have a basis from which to work. We've all discussed it, and we obviously see that there are some changes that need to be made. But if we adopt what the, what the committee gave us, we're working from a clear playing field. They've upgraded things for us. We don't have to go all the way back to where we were before. So that's what I'm asking you to do, to adopt what they have presented to us and then begin work immediately on how we want it to look in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I've got to say this, this has been some of the best discussion this council has had. I mean, there's good points, I think, on both sides of this issue, and I think everyone has made some pretty decent, decent points here, and I think it has really, really been good for us to really hash this thing out, regardless of what happens. But I think it's, I think it's been really good. Ms. McGrew.
Thank you. One more quick thing is I have no desire to reject this ordinance as it's written in its entirety. I just don't agree with every single point of it. And what I personally would like to see us do is take these brilliant ideas that were given to us and go back to it and keep working on it.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? We do have a motion and a second on there, and then the motion would be to adopt the recommendation, the ordinance, which is based on the recommendations of the Alcohol Ordinance Study Committee, as presented. If there's nothing else, we'll just take a roll call vote probably best, because I know we're going to have, I'm not going to be able to judge what we end up with here. So, okay, we'll start with Ms. Wilson. Okay. Mr. Goodman.
I'm standing.
I'm standing, okay.
No.
Ms. Grant.
No.
Okay. Motion fails to carry. Okay, so we still maintain the same ordinance we've had for some times, sometime at this point. Okay. Okay. Mr. Yon.
I would, I would recommend that we do perhaps make a committee from the council to try to iron out a ordinance using their recommendations that we can all live with. I think that would be our next step in not keep kicking it down the road too far, but try to come up with something that we all are happy with.
If that's a motion, I second it.
Having a motion, not to kick the can down the road.
Love it.
To go ahead and try to move forward in looking at this from the, I guess, council committee standpoint, so I'll make an appointment with that committee, probably in our next meeting, and we'll move forward. Ms. McGrew.
I was going to say, I definitely agree that we need a committee, council, to take these recommendations and work into something cohesive and bring it back. And that, again, may not be exactly what all of us are looking for and keep working at it. So I think that's a great idea. And did you make a motion?
She, he did, yeah. He made the motion, and Ms. Wilson seconded the motion to do that.
Oh, okay.
Okay. You know, maybe that's what we should have done to start with.
Should we back?
We will. Those, I don't know what we voted for exactly, but.
Technically, it would be a request that you appoint a committee, I think.
Yeah, okay. All in favor? He opposed.
Do I have to abstain?
Probably not on that one. Okay. Next item. Discussion possible action, street closure, special event for Canton Dizzy Dean Parade Route. Is that going to be a problem with anybody?
No.
I, we do need a motion on that, though.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Who made the motion? Ms. McGrew made the motion. Mr. Yon seconded that motion. All in favor, seconded by, saying aye? Opposed, no? You waited all this time for that, didn't you, Pat? Okay. City manager's report. Mr. Peppers.
I only have one item tonight. We had received a letter last week from Cherokee County Water and Sewerage Authority. I'll just read it to you real quick. In accordance with the provisions of the above referenced service delivery agreement, please take notice that Cherokee County Water and Sewerage Authority would like to extend its water and wastewater treatment services into the city of Canton service area in order to provide water and wastewater services to a tract of real property located within the city of Canton generally, situated east of Marietta Highway, northwest of I-575, adjacent to Kroger Shopping Center Plaza. Described as Cherokee County Tax Maps as parcel number 15 and 13, parcel number 11. As you'll recall, a racetrack service station was previously located upon such tract. It is the understanding of Cherokee County Water and Sewerage Authority that Racetrack Corporate desires to construct a new racetrack store and gas station upon said tract. The Cherokee County Water and Sewerage Authority has water and wastewater infrastructure available to serve the proposed development. It's also understood the city of Canton does not presently have the ability to provide water and wastewater services to the above described property. In accordance with procedures established by the service delivery agreement, the city shall have 15 days from receipt of this notice to provide objection to the Water and Sewerage Authority of its intended extension. They'll await our reply. We did some research on this property, just clarifying, there used to be a racetrack at Exit 14 right there at Kroger. It was torn down several years ago. I think at one point, Racetrack put the property up for sale, didn't get a suitable buyer, and now they've decided to build a racetrack back in that location. So you've got Chevron Racetrack, Kroger's got their own gas station in the Kroger parking lot. In doing our own research, we did provide water and sewer to the racetrack that was there. The sewer was actually pumped as part of a line that's at the Kroger that goes up to Ridge Road, basically, that area, to Univatta Road. And on the water side, we had a meter, and we paid basically a wholesale rate to Cherokee County and then red the meter and charged the water and sewer back to the racetrack. So if it's okay with council, I plan to just respond to this letter and say, your thought process that we do not have the ability to provide water and sewer there is incorrect. In fact, this is how the property was originally served. We would encourage it, since it's the same owner and the same site, to act just like it was before. There would be a meter there. We would read it. We would pay wholesale to Cherokee County. It's no change there, and we would send the sewer up to Univatta like we did in the past. So if that's okay with council, that's how I would like to proceed with the letter.
You don't want any objection to that? No, do it.
That's all I have. Thank you.
That's all you have? Wow. Okay. Under the mayor's report, two or three things I want to mention, and it won't be as long as it was before, I promise. There's a lot of campaign signs there now that's been getting to crop up, and we have a city ordinance regarding campaign signs. And I guess my question to this council is, is it, because the council, it's backed a couple of elections ago, decided they would sort of waive that and let the campaign signs be put up outside of the ordinance, which the ordinance says that campaign signs in the city can go up at the last day of qualifying until that election is resolved. So if the election's over on Election Day, that's, campaign signs need to come down shortly thereafter. If it's a runoff, then they can stay up and until the runoff is decided. The question that I have with this council is, because I see a number of signs going up now, which is obviously more than, qualifying hasn't occurred yet for, to my knowledge, on any of the races. I don't think it's sometime in March. I'm not sure exactly the date. But is it this council's interest in seeing that the campaign sign ordinance is enforced at this time? Anybody want to comment on that?
Yes.
Ms. McGrew? The answer is yes. Anyone else? Mr. Goodman?
I'd say I'm more going ahead than now.
You're saying, don't enforce it?
Don't enforce it.
Okay. One don't, one do. Mr. Grant.
I know we discussed this pretty extensively as we were going through our new code, and I know one of the points of discussion was that we all need to agree on it and, you know, all agreed to abide by enforcement. And I, I do believe in this last election that everyone attempted to abide by that.
Yes, I think so.
Because I know I got a couple of calls myself unintentionally that, and I tried to abide by them, but I, I'm all in favor of enforcing our sign ordinances, campaign, all sign ordinances, because we know how quickly that can get out of control. But I think any enforcement of that is a good thing, so.
I think part of what brought this to my attention is, is that I've had one or two calls from people that would ask me, does, does the city regulate campaign signs? Do you have an ordinance or anything? And what I would do is, I've referred them to Ken or to Steve Green and said, they have a copy of our ordinance. You know, you can get in, take a look at it, but there are requirements on that. I don't want to have told somebody that, or we have told somebody, you can't do it, and others do it, and, you know, we don't do anything. I think that would send really a bad message. Mr. Yon.
Yeah, I would just like that I am in favor also of enforcing the ordinance. It's, that's, it's only fair to give everybody the same level playing field, because they, I mean, they, if they don't know the ordinance, then they need to learn very quickly. I don't say pull the sign immediately, educate them if they don't know, but at least the first time. But I have seen and been involved in campaigns, and I'm sure we all have, where it gets out of, it just goes kind of crazy. If you don't follow the rules, then everybody just starts... If you don't follow the rules, then everybody just starts, you know, throwing up 20 signs on one yard and it just gets kind of out of control real fast. So I think we do need to enforce the rules.
This is going to be a big election, as you know, not just some local races, but statewide races. So there's going to be a lot of signs out there.
Yeah, I just want to add, like, if we have no, I mean, right now it's after qualifying through, as you said, through, until the time the, the election is resolved. If we don't have that timeframe, then what do we have? Does that mean if I'm insane enough to run again in four years that I could go ahead and start putting up signs now?
That's exactly what it would be.
I mean, there'd be no time limits and, and like, there's no limits at all. So we got to have something in there and then I always say that if, if we have something in our ordinances and we don't enforce it, then it's, it shouldn't be in there because it's, it has no weight. So, but if it's in our ordinance, regardless of whether it's campaign signs or anything else, it needs to be enforced and elected officials and people running for office should adhere to our ordinances just like our citizens should have to.
Ms. McGrew, you have something?
I completely echo what Mr. Grant said and it bothers me a great deal to have an ordinance on the books and just ignore and not enforce it. We have them for a reason. And I went to Roswell Sunday and drove down 140. And some beautiful pastures, but then there would be an outcropping of a pox of signs, campaign signs or subdivision signs. And I told my husband, "I'm so glad we live in the city where we have rules against littering and, and I consider signs litter. They're necessary during campaign and, and houses have to sell, but we need to reinforce, we need to enforce our ordinances, all of them."
Okay. Mr. Peppers?
If I could just comment a little bit, we are enforcing as it relates to signs in right of ways. The question has always been as it relates to the sign on private property. And the reason for that is the city allows temporary signs on property.
Not without a permit though, do they?
Without a permit.
You allow any sign without a permit?
It's based on size. It's based on type of sign.
Well, these are campaign signs and I think we, I think we're going to have to stick to campaign signs.
Well, the question always from a staff perspective is the legality because at that point, what we're looking at is we're looking at the content of the sign as to whether or not it's a campaign sign, a real estate sign, a, "Hey, we support Jack Doe" kind of person or, you know, "Jack Doe lives here" kind of deal. And the concern, I guess, in the past, from a staff perspective, has been that, you know, as you had mentioned, sometimes the council wanted to be aggressive on it, sometimes they didn't want to be aggressive on it. It comes down to the individual sign on the private property at that point and are we going to open ourselves up from any liability as it relates to content? Because that's what you're judging at that point. I mean, you can put up a real estate sign saying, "This lot is for sale" and that sign can stay up until the lot sells.
I'm not sure you're judging content when you're judging the type of sign. A real estate, we, we classify some as real estate sign. Are we judging content? I don't think so.
That is why, Mr. Mayor, council members, the real estate signs, the weekend directional signs, the campaign signs, all of those are contained under a section in our sign regulations that talks and addresses temporary signs. Temporary signs do not require a permit. There are size limitations in regards to the signage itself. Our sign regulations do not allow any of the signage within the right of way. They, we've been enforcing the size and keeping them out of the right of way.
How do you define temporary?
It's up for a certain number of days.
How many days?
It usually specifies what that, that time limit is. For instance, campaign section, the last day of qualifying until that election or ballot initiative is decided. Weekend directionals, they're allowed to go up on a Friday afternoon, come down on a Monday morning. Real estate signs go up, they have to come down when that lot is sold. There are specific time limits specified for each of the categories of the temporary signs.
So we do have a category for campaign signs?
It is a subsection under temporary signs. Yes, sir. Mayor and council are very specific and adamant in having these multiple categories under temporary signs.
Yeah, even on, even on private property, right. Oh, we don't allow any on the right of way. That's, that's not even of discussion. We're talking about those that are, because if they're on the right of way, they need to be removed. Okay? Because we don't allow them even the day before the election theoretically and you know what happens, but theoretically that would be the case. But we're really talking about those, I guess, on private property. Okay. Uh, Mr. Estes?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I, I mean, I went through the process with the election and it seemed pretty clear. So I think, I think it comes down to, you know, in private and commercial lots, you know, what the size limitations are and, and so, and I, I kind of echo what others have said. I mean, I, I don't have a problem with it, but at the same time, it's the ordinance and I think we got to, we got to adhere to it.
And there is a reason for that ordinance, you know? I mean, really there is and it's not just to hurt people or anything like that.
Mr. Mayor?
It's good.
I'm not for ignoring the rule. I just think it's very hard to enforce because parts of the city are, have pockets where it's the county and not the city and, you know, they're all, they also...
Oh, yes, some of it is.
And also, we have a lot of signs that are already out there. I don't know if these people don't know they're doing it or they just did it. Uh, you know, but we've got several on Main Street.
Of course.
That have appeared. And also, I wanted to know, what about a state race? I mean, are, are...
What about what?
Are, are our rules the same for the state race?
Yeah, our rules would apply to signs inside the city regardless of what, what they said or what they were, I guess.
I've been asked that too and I said the same, but I just wanted to hear it from you.
That, that's my understanding. Do you have something? Oh, you, you threw, okay. Anyone else? All right. It sounds like we may need to, I don't think we probably should, should vote on that issue, but I, I think the consensus is that those, that we need to be enforcing the sign. Is that a fair statement?
We'll be happy to do so.
Thank you. Next item I had was, um, we are coming up in a, in a, in a timeframe where we need to begin to take a look at going out for proposals for, for a sanitation company. And I would like to, we, we had a sanitation committee some time ago that had, had worked on the issue of helping our city manager put together a, a request for proposals from the various companies. And I'd like to activate that committee again, which was Ferris, Bill and Sandy. So I'd like for y'all, if you would, kind of to work for Mr. Peppers and, and come back up and see what kind of proposal or, or that we can end up with and bring that back to the council in, in the fairly near future, hopefully. Also wanted to mention that I hope everyone, council members especially and others, would take a look at Senate bill that's in the Senate now, how, Senate Bill 418, which is another one of the state's preemptive bills. You have a copy here at your desk, what it, what it does and, you know, it's sort of a backdoor movement, in my opinion, to try to preempt our ability to prohibit the sales of puppies and kittens. House Bill 144 tried that last year. It was, it was pretty much defeated during the, during that session or withdrawn, I think. The, the author of, of that bill has said this time that he's not going to push it, but apparently has encouraged others and in the Senate they're pushing a bill that when you read it, it's rather, you know, it says nothing about puppies and kittens, okay? What it says is that anything basically that is governed under the Department of Agriculture or the city, local or government, local government could not regulate it in the least. And just so happens, pet stores and stuff, as I understand, are under the Department of Agriculture. What would this do to food trucks? Would that take that ability away from us to do that? I don't know the answer to that, but I got a feeling there could be some serious consequences, some inadvertent type consequences that they may not even think about what it could do. But it appears that the effort is just another preemptive effort to take away the local decision making of, of the municipalities and the counties. I hope you'll take a look at that and if you, you know, have, have opposed that bill, I hope you'll contact as many of the legislators as possible, particularly ours. It did, as I understand, come out of the Agricultural Committee today with an approval recommendation, but it was three to two. So it wasn't a very strong recommendation, although we've had three to two before, haven't we? It still gets the job done, right? The, the other thing I wanted to mention is that I have, I have sent letters in view of some of the recent concerns about the Canton Housing Authority. I have sent letters requesting, we made two appointments recently, Nathan Brandon and Meg Rogers, to the Housing Authority. I have sent letters to the remaining members asking that they submit their resignation and that hopefully by March 1st. And to let me know if they have an interest in being reappointed. It doesn't say they would be necessarily, but it, it could, some could be. But I feel like in view of what has happened to that authority in recent times and the fact that the mayor makes those appointments, we have to do something and we have to make sure that, that is an operating entity and it, and it serves the needs that, that are here in our city. I think it's been a long time since there's been any really new public housing made and certainly no senior housing or anything like that. So, I mean, I suspect it's been at least 15 or 20 years. I don't know how long it's been. But, and, and I know money has not been good at that time, but I still feel like that maybe we could do more in that area. And the Housing Authority has a tremendous authority, so to speak, to do things like that. So I just wanted to let you know that I had requested that and as soon as I hear back, I will be making some additional appointments, assuming that I do hear back. If not, we will do what we need to do to, to move this Housing Authority forward. The other, um, I think that is all. We, we now need to adjourn to executive session. We will not be coming back out to make any final decisions, but we need to go to executive session to discuss potential litigation and real estate acquisition. Mr. Grant made the motion. We have a second. Mr. Yon made the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no? All members are for the motion. Thank you.